I will now move to the public speaking portion of the meeting. Is there anyone wishing to address city council, you may do so at this time. Please state your name and address of the record.
Here Sammy, my brother. Chairman of the local organizing. Thirty-two and eleven, let's listen to this guy. I'd like to read this article, came out of suburban New York. On August 13th. Elizabeth receives more than $2.8 million in federal housing grants. U.S. Senators Robert Hernandez and Frank Lohner recently announced that Elizabeth is sharing $35.7 million in federal funding for community development and for housing opportunities for low-income English families and individuals living with AIDS. The city received a total of $2,812,120 of the grants awarded by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development fund are part of four initiatives. The Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, Emergency Shelter Grant, ESG, Home and House Opportunities for Persons with AIDS. This very funding was used in our neighborhood with local economies and helping the elderly families find a safe place to call home, said Senator Lana Lohner, a member of the Appropriations Subcommittee on Transportation, Housing and Urban Development, which funds the fund. We will continue to fight and invest in the nervous community and improve access to housing for families in our city. Elizabeth received $1,865,232 as part of a community development block grant program that provides annual grants for the unemployment community revitalization and development of ideal housing options in low to middle income areas. Now, if we receive this money not in full, we focus on the condition of the people at Over Plaza. And use this money first to help relocate those who see, because of the building need to be counted in. Now Elizabeth Local Organization, some of you may not have known about us. In 2005, we were instrumental in a protest rally against Elizabeth Public Park. We had three protest rallies that was, uh, air-bombing, Channel 12, Channel 9, Channel 7, and it slowed down the race of the protest. The false press, the mistreatment, we were able to get Officer Michael Rose from Slant and the Oreo about the plaza back. It moved him somewhere else. Now they're going back, now racism is back, oppression is back at Over Plaza. I witnessed it with my own eyes. I go up there and I, I see the racial tension that's going on between Elizabeth Public Park and the residents of Over Plaza. In Roselle, 2007, few months apart only shot two young men. Myself, my community, with the help of a people's organization of progress, we went to every city council meeting in Roselle for two years demanding justice. So don't think we're gonna go away, we're gonna be here until the people of Over Plaza get justice. I'm gonna be here by myself. You don't see as many new tenants in there that I don't worry about. I'm gonna be here until those people receive justice. There's a demolition site, one of the buildings were torn down, there's 400 buildings on Irving Street Avenue. A building that was filled with vehicles, roaches, rats, especially black holes. There's no covering on the building, it has, it's been a month now and they haven't got the, uh, the, uh, the rescue to the building organization. Your people are suffering in dozens all throughout the community. They won't even put a car over the building. You haven't opened up, opened the brick. They won't even put a car over the brick. Children playing outside grieving on this respect that they're slapping off. Children coming down on the avenue. And don't be telling me you don't have a house, you got a house. Cause things have gotten a little bit, uh, on the move up here. Things have gotten a little bit on the move up here. You understand, totally not acting as crazy as they used to be. But racism is still there, it's still there, it's just waiting for us to slack on it so they can continue the way they've been doing for years. But the conditions must change, that apartment complex must be renovated. If you haven't been up there, council members, please go on, and see what we're talking about. Walk around, walk around and to see what we're talking about. See how the people are suffering. Visit the funeral parlor, see the terrible conditions that the people live in under. You can't put a flag on that place. It's irrelevant, you got your family to thank.
The Director of the Resident Taxpayer that would like to address the city council meeting, do so at this time.
Welcome to the city, I see that they have programs that have worked for 25, authorized the management to act upon, set the effective, oh, city, and how ready you know this session, this is what we do, 78th day, December 31st, 2014. Uh, I asked, uh, the council, who are, they also had this 11-day, August 1st, 2005, as appropriate arguments with new vertical benefits, sponsored with 2005, many big challenge competitions actually, with applications of values, 50,000 residents, and then the non-advocacy, 500 dollars. I wonder, they're also, um, have a right of, uh, this, uh, 20th session, and, uh, tell me, uh, how my wife sold it, how it can be made.
Is there any other taxpayer or resident wishing to address city council, you may do so at this time?
Yeah, I'm here for Over Plaza, 230, to Jay Park, I was, I had bad hair every day, every day when I come in, I used to go to Stevens and Sanders Center, when I come in, I gotta open my car doors to come in to park my cars, I parked about the window, mine was the last one in the back of the 230. As you can see now, I'm still parked, you got a little bit of these little kids out there, grownups, you got, if I walk from here, from, you know, my house to the front door, I'm smelling, it smells all the way down by the fire department. And the fire department people that work there, they are also inhaling this and smelling this, and it's there on our fire department too. And, uh, I mean, the smell is just terrible up there, you know, doors are open, we almost had a flood there, somebody turned on the fire hose, and I mean, it's, it's just very, very unlivable condition. I had to put it, put it away in city building, but, you know, I'm on the list, so I gotta wait. So, you know, many times I'm parked and I'm gagging, I got an asthma attack yesterday from coming out of the parking lot, and I put my car to the side, I don't care about asthma. And I mean, it's really unlivable condition, they go watering down, but then the sun rises up and it's all gray and it smells, I mean, to me, they're taking a long time to move all this stuff up, I look at it every day, and it's like, like they did a little bit of virtual, you know, and they're being paid the challenge. I don't know what's taking them so long to clear this matter, but I've been up there 29 years, I've been up there, you know, the elevator say, you know, the elevator, my mother held, and fire companies, thank God I live on the, you know, the second floor. When I moved to that, they wanted me to go on the fourth floor, and I argued with my children, I said, I'm not even on the fourth floor, because the elevator say, oh, they come to where we got it, but I don't have to, you know, to say why they got it. And I told them, I don't, and I told them, if they move, we could have walked on out of the porch, my councilwoman, they didn't want to help, so they put me on the second floor. So thank God the elevator, if I can't walk outside and go to my mother, but I'm inhaling this every day, I just need to get to the office soon, and I should not have to do this, you know, I paid my rent, you know, I'm not behind, okay?
Is there any other taxpayer or resident wishing to address city council, you may do so at this time?
Um, I'm here to make my opinion, I'm looking at the city, I'm just, I'm disgusted by housing. I'm disgusted by seeing houses that give house right in Elizabeth. I don't understand why it's like about three years ago, and getting worse and worse. I looked at the neighbors, Seth Correll, and told him, uh, it's part of the building. He lets me, he's a gentleman, I'm talking to you for a minute, it's using our own time, okay? Then I had my classmate, brothers, and they are trying to create, I asked, I was my thing, I don't think we're really building, they said they can create, they went to the front office, and, uh, old professor, I looked at her, she came to see Seth, she's there, and said, she learned this a lot, this is Tina, you're the service, yes, he said, you, uh, I'm showing you, so what's my problem, so I had to go to a food street, let's go back to the side, see a red door, red light, red door, and you got a struggle, a noise, did anybody help? No, because so many might have thrown up things. So again, I looked at Seth, and I said, it's not my problem. Then again, we got disgusted, I was called by the servant, building, okay? I'm before the train at the social, and one of the servants, he was a little citizen, like today, he was one of the tenants, he's so, he's, uh, emotionally disturbed, he come and said, I'm hungry, I'm hungry, I said, go to the office, tell all the people they're hungry. He said they would walk away from him, they did, I said, go back to the academy, they still walk away, this man was hungry. I said, fine, tell the man, oh, he's running for his sister, she followed him after half hour, cleaning crime, they finally called him and his sister. To me, when I was still out, I wanted to see how the pack out was protected, if not that way. I said, why is the social working, it's one question, citizens do not provide social workers, they see a house from that, it's a shame. I'm happy for it, they come talk to me, Tina, I need this, Tina, I need this, I have the post office, but all the shutting, 15 hours all the time. And my daughter, uh, office staff, she goes, you went to prison, she went to prison, I said, I know she's that way. She's uncoordinated, she shows us a bit, and that's a protest thing, but it always on me, but, I tell my seeing how Elizabeth is awful. We went to North, the third North and Rock Forest, Elizabeth was armed, was a vet, actually that didn't fly, we didn't work here, it's like this so bad, he said, no, I believe so. And then I, today I surprise, they'll charge you five hours, change the bike, get a new bike. You can't take back the check or cash, you have to give them a money order. Let's think about these citizens, oh, and state, how can you go to the bank, who goes to post to get a five hour money, get the bike back changed? That exists for you, that's not existent in higher, so I took pictures, I took them from classes. Five hours for a laptop, we both know what kind of money I need for it. I think, and I thought, I was accidentally, well, I'm, uh, test calling, Tina, I need my, my, my load, I'm a part, I love myself, the 20, send off, stay back here, let's take the key, let us some back here, and when our hand, when we move forward, as I'm glad we're, it's like, we're going to burn time, so let's make some more cash. Please, please, it bothers me, the human heart, I always think socially, but what I've seen is this, is a problem, and if you can do about this problem, please, please do it. These old pink ladies are tough, they were all their lives, they did protect the house, city council, city system, it's not happening. I was, I was shocked, I saw it, but I see, I want to, if I'm there, see citizens that are, uh, detected, prayers for in-house building, it's not clean, can they come any help, they come, call me, I said, I'm not lying, but hurt me, anyway, I want, I'm always praying that social workers, I'll do it anytime. So please, council, please, please, to my priority, feel something like seeing a house, ask a check, for something happening, I told you, and I said, let me.
Any other resident or taxpayer wishing to address city council, you may do so at this time? Name and address of the record.
Huh? We are actually in 321 West Good Avenue. Okay, I have, um, I don't know where I can go to, to try to buy some sort of program for something, do this with for autism, I'm not talking about school, where we do need a school for autism, I'm talking about, you know, our program, you know, recreational thing of that nature, you know, to try get my students with sport or something, you know, or just something, just for autism, there's really nothing in Elizabeth, everything is in mountainside, or in living space, wherever it is, you know, they do have that school programs, in mountainside, but that, uh, takes two buses to get over to where they go. You know, I don't know if anybody, you know, has any child or no child, especially needs, you know, or anything, but they really need more in Elizabeth for autism, for special needs, whatever you can, cause they're begging, begging.
Could you give the information so that way she can find out and get you back to you on it? Yeah, make sure she has your. Any other taxpayer or resident wishing to address city council, you may do so at this time?
So, in this, uh, test, we do the bar, bar street. Uh, situation with the police hasn't changed, it hasn't changed at all. He's, um, said he broke into the, uh, slacked up, I'm up there every night, he comes through when he can, check out for us, they ain't slacking at all, they come through, just last night, they were, not even harassing, I told you, just last night, it's happening, a kid playing in the dirt, they saying he was vandalizing some stuff, whatever, I put the mud, nine-year-old kid, put the mud on the side of the chair, when he was playing in the dirt, they called backup on him, uh, gave the mother hard times, and, uh, you know, they walk through at night, they put their hands in the sticks, putting on their gloves, about 10 of them, this is every night, they come through, they say smart remarks, tell the, uh, wrong people they got to go in the house, the man, this is still on, you ain't doing anything about it, you didn't really do nothing, I'm just saying straight up what you been doing, even. The, this is the living over there, as far as what this is, no, nobody's living in there, nobody do nothing, ain't doing anything, their breathing is horrible, you told me you were gonna come, I told you personally, the last time I saw you, you would come, you didn't come, you just see yourself, the police went past, when they come up there, what that say? Uh, you want me to show you the picture now, I'll show you some footage from that, but I, I, like I said, I didn't bring all this stuff here, but I have, when the time comes, I'm gonna show everybody everywhere. But I'm giving you a chance to do something, you know, you're doing nothing, nothing. Do something, I hope you do the right thing with this money, I don't know, I'm just gonna set up, I'm gonna show you, uh, I know the worries, but I'll leave it here, whatever, for you, this is all.
You can give it to the city clerk, that can now circulate to everybody.
Okay, but, something's gotta change, because these cops are way out there, they beat up a female downtown, I don't know who you're wearing that, that, um, they're, they're out of control, they're narcotic, you know, just because they walk around now, the only thing that's changing, they don't wear their plain clothes anymore, they're in uniform, that's the thing changing, you see, everything else is the same, they're still the same, they have like maniacs, they walk, night, you should see how they gonna do, they turn all the work on you, like, go in the house, go in the house, go in the house, he said, well, I'm not helping my children, it's seven o'clock, it's the summertime, I don't care, I thought I could come back, I'm gonna lock the door. This is, this is recent, this is this week we talked about, last night they were harassing a little child, a nine-year-old kid, someone who could have just told his mother to hang his robe, he's still riding on the rides, they have these special edition trucks, the white, the special truck, they, they ride all the way across, racing all, and these are, they're, these are scientists, I don't know who tends, white shirts, we call them, the ones that, they know better, they know better, okay? Those are the ones that tell the other ones not to do it, why are they still doing it? They're, they're, the other cops are trying to do what they see them do, you know, and, and, and what they're telling, I know they're not talking about that, they're, they're still doing it, you're not, you, what do you want me to do, when you bring, uh, TV in for you to see this and stuff like that, I don't want to do it, I'm telling you, I, I don't like trying to keep coming and wasting, but I will, uh, like I said, like he said, we'll be here all the time, till something's changed, and I hope we do the right thing with this money, we know about it, okay? We know about it, but, but, great numbers, I must know about it, do something about it, fix, I don't know what's going on, but do something, okay? Something affecting that we know, and, and come up there, like you promise, promise me I'm all, practice with you, nothing will happen to you, you don't have to worry about that, one cop's coming, fine, we walk right with them, I don't get high, they come at night, they come, they're dirty day, they should come at night, so you can see what we see, should come at night, maybe, 12 at night, 11 at night, you can't even walk through the schooling, like, you can't go to the car and get gas, then, then parking by your car, saying smart remarks, up and blocking your entrance, you can't pull out, this is what goes on all the day, and, and, you know, and the people are like, they're not afraid of it, they, it's, what, what could you do? It's in the law, you know, you only can say so much, that's why put your hands on you, you're not doing nothing, do something, please.
Any other taxpayer or resident wishing to address city council, you may do so at this time?
Anyway, my name is Elmar, I'm the governor of the state, 672, that one. Yeah, the, 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 speaking of, uh, references to the nine-year-old, that's why I'm there, you know, but, but, and, you know, and, and, this is ridiculous, we, we still shoot kids, let the car, I mean, I had, I didn't tell him, I had, you know, it was all to the point where we, I had all the kids, you know, he's not a bad man, he's never been a trouble, he's not gonna run trouble, you know, until we clean it up, that's what you're doing, you know, but all the while, you know, I, I couldn't tell him, take my hand off, why you still, you know, but, the response is, yeah, bro, I, I call back, you know, I'm, he's young, you know, he's not gonna, he's not, he's not like, he's not like a, a bad liar, like, like, he has spray fingers, I'm like, it's much, it's much, it's nothing like what has ever, you know, this is what we've been reduced to. I said, I actually saw, I was on fire, people didn't kill, they don't, you know, 4th Street, you know, 4th Street, they have some, they have some, you know, but, I had enough to do with chasing nine-year-old there, because he's playing, you know, I mean, I'm just trying, trying to clarify this situation, I mean, we're trying to something, we're looking for, you know, or, we're going to say, we made a real effort to, you know, represent situations, we're trying, you know, with care of community relationships, you know, the office, you know, the ministry, you know, the agents that we have, you know, the whole laws, but, this is all, as far as, you know, I'm not gonna get to that, you know, I, you know, God knows, it's something, I don't feel like it's a fair shake, I don't need to just have, you know, you know, clearly understand that, I don't understand, you know, where this money, you know, has been, this group created, I mean, finding out, like, company at 4th Street, and that's the same thing inside, but they just, they just, you see, you know, the candy, the same, same, so, you know, you're friends the same time, I mean, basically, like, okay, you get the money, and we'll go in, and, and this is a job here, and say this will be spent, I mean, when is it actually gonna come to this group? You know, you see a one building, they have a lot of stairs before, and one building has, that's, I'm questioning all of you, all of you at the same time. All right, these are the concerns that I have, and then, a question for everybody who says, probably a lot of, or, you know, whenever you feel like, you know, desire, you want to use someone, you know, I'll be, you know, all the rest of our, you know, all for that.
Any other resident or taxpayer wishing to address city council, you may do so at this time?
We, we need to move on to the side so much.
Hold on, hold on, Mike, uh, hold on, Mike, that's.
It was Adrian Pauls, I was at 200 Park, 420, and, um, here's manager, that's Over Plaza Parts. When we were last here, we came with our complaints, we came with our woes, we came with our comments to you, you saying that you tried to get, um, Ms. Carafolio to come and have a meeting with us. I think that that man should be with the council, if the council could not have anything to say, and with the tenants, the tenants of Over Plaza, and then, well, I received a note under my door, stating that they want to have a meeting with the tenants. My question is, why aren't we having a separate meeting? Why aren't we having a meeting here? You did say to us that you would try to have CIS here at council, and here, I'm sure there's some questions that you have for them, and I'm sure whatever question that you have for them, we would like to hear. Uh, I do have a copy, we're welcome to constantly, tomorrow, the 7:00, it's 4:05, which I think is very, hours are unacceptable, because we have people at work, and they would like to be at the city, and I just feel so, this is another point for them, to just dismiss us, and have, it's not a whole lot of members, but the people that are concerned, that need to be there. That's all I have to say.
Any other taxpayer or resident wishing to address city council, you may do so at this time?
Hi, my name is Marie, I was two about, in 62nd floor, you know, I came here to talk about some concerns on the first floor, where I'm at, will you know something, hearing these people and the way that they're living, everybody, okay, should be understanding, especially you said that, you're the council, and I don't think that this happened over there. When you took office, you promised that you would take care of your own border. Now, to me, I think, if any of yous want to know how it is to live up there, why don't you stay in one apartment? Because me, I was a landlord, and I used to work for the hundred, and I used to take care of, you know, a, a, a building of 250 people, as God is my witness, those people would live in, the floor or ceilings were falling down, and I sat there, and I had every good care of the other, because that could have been my family member, and that could have been me who liked to live. You do not want other people to live the way you wouldn't want to live, or your children. But I hear these people pain, and as officials, do you hear this? I need your vote, well, now they're, they're knocking over here, saying, I need help, and what are you spending in dope? Because I've been looking at these videos, Nelson, I'm sorry, I respect you, but you should have kept your work, you should have showed up, and, and let them see that you are serious, because it hurts them, these people are crying. I was crying, and I, I'm not gonna, it's just me, I felt, and they were having a picnic, that they were all recording, that, that, uh, Over Plaza was being knocked down, and I talked to my friend James, I took a gun and said, wow, I'm surprised they didn't get beach chairs, and, you know, selling tickets out there, you know, to see if this happened, we, the people go to go. These are children, to hear that certain have the plain mud, would you want your kids to play in mud? Is that why we have children? Many of them don't have money like we all, but you know something, live in their apartment, see how they have to live, and then as a police, I know Migos, Migos should not be in the police department, as we want them, and you are like, how could you continue to let an officer like that still patrol our community? This, he's a racist person, he hates the public, he hates it. He might go turn around, saw him, a white sheet over his head, and said, I'm AKK, because I know Migos, and I know that. Those are two cops that should not be on the force. Now, I could stand here and used to say, okay, we're supposed to allow, I really don't care, but you know something, I stand up for the people. And I'm sitting there, and I take passes, and I'm feeling their pain, and I don't live there, and if I live there, let me tell you something, you saying that you went to the city help, I bet you any money, right now, I'll put a thousand dollars against your dog, that I'll get something done before you do, and I take a practice on my grandson's life, that I will get help for that. Thank you.
Any other resident or taxpayer wishing to address city council, you may do so at this time?
Well, if this is who I want to place, the butcher. Um, I think it's poor, from what I've heard since, in Over Plaza, I live on that place, I don't hate the litter, they smell like someone's home, they all got to walk out my door, and it smells, uh, right there, because that was the place, Over Plaza, and when they knock your litter there, it's like, right across street, that was it, so, would they smell when they hang out, or when they turn to my side? So, when they smell, they may have something, or when they trip me from outside the place, when I step out my front door, do whatever they have to do, I also smell it. I just want to say to the council that, um, if you give your word, like you give your words that way, then you understand by your word. Without your word, that's the first thing you have, is your word. And then, once you move on your word and show action, then somebody can say you did something. But if you're not doing nothing, then your word goes to what? Lost. It goes to the lost, so we thank you for, um, uh, Patricia Perkins, for all my hard work that you guys, and I thank you. I'm sorry, sorry. But the young man right here, he, um, he also, after the council meeting, he also came, and the cops, um, they were saying something like, um, something to him, and the fact that, um, I want to, I'll, I'll just power face, I'm not for sure, but I think in the summer, you need to go home, go over there with the people, we said, I'm going, I'm going, right over there with the, I'm going to hang out with them. I thought that was all, the cops, they were standing outside, they called it, the rest of the brothers, sisters, that was out there. Um, and, um, and, um, they, you know, and the cops, it was, because they didn't know, they didn't realize who he was at first, but then I guess they figured out who he was, and I guess it was like, oh, maybe you shouldn't go there, we said, that's, that's exactly where I'm going, because he was going wrong with them. And just like, he came, I'm like, Patricia, I'll purpose stand up, maybe we should come out. Smell without smell, see without see.
Any other taxpayer or resident wishing to address city council? Do so at this time.
Please, I'm James Carrigan, chairman of Elizabeth Bradshaw People's Association of Fighters.
My name is Pete.
I'm interested, you know, I was on a media website, and just talking here, I'm supporting a class, I was asked after they were, when I was speaking to this party, choking, I think she was, that's the token expression, and here, number, uh, 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 actionized, uh, question, and you failed to reply, I can't get an ultimate disrespect. You know, these people have been coming up here time, and time, and time, bringing to your attention the situation that you guys are fully aware of. You are aware of the global condition and emergency devastation of the 500th Plaza. And then, they, they, they conduct that mission on a building, and I know, I have a background, and just like, how this is, it's, 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 it's swayed, swayed there, it is swayed, they did it, it wasn't, it wasn't a thorough job. This stuff, you know, the days that we, we had to do this, because it's human, okay, and then we're strong, that's the way, and that stuff becomes arrogant. You had children out there, okay, and you can be refined, at the beginning, you're being almost gagged. It's sad, and you sit, sit up there, you know, as usual, what you, you not agree for, all environment protection agency, okay? Again, if you, if you jump ahead, like, oh, please, go on, for me, just the part, okay? It's sad that these people have been oppressed on, they, they not sit up there, as you just mentioned. I mean, you gave them your word, like, remember, you know, like, all we expect, I respect you also, but you gave these people their word. Back in the day, people come, we didn't, we didn't, we didn't care about, so we get a person a shake, we shook their hand, we get my word, my word was all the time, okay? You told these people you were worried, we should have, well, at least you did that, come on, man, it's appalling. It's really appalling, you know, this kid said, now, they're being harassed by this nine-years-old, because he's playing, he's playing, I mean, instantly in the mud, that's just horrible. And then when cops come up there with this impulsive, they call back, they knock out one of them. That's right. They try to, they, they, you know, this is, this is, this is. You gotta, you look into the situation, as opposed to, that guy's, I think, that's you, their fight is my fight. You know, I mean, when it's done, you guys, fully aware of the situation in the global condition and emergency devastation of the 400th Plaza. If you can't, I, 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 you can't remember, you can't remember now, but you do on your way. I know anyone, you need to look into this situation, every character, because of the people, the time, if they rise up against their process, remember what happened with the 67th.